Given by Commissioner Perry, after which a pledge of allegiance given by our Treasurer, Sean Thornley.
Our dear heavenly Father, we come before this time grateful for the blessings that Thou blessed us with. We're grateful to reside here in Boxer County and to be able to serve Thee at this time in the capacities that we serve. And we pray at this time, Father, that Thou will bless those who are mourning, especially the loss of an individual that's known by many here in the United States, that his family will be blessed and comforted at this time of loss. May I ask the blessing also upon those who serve us in law enforcement, fire, military, as first responders, that Thou bless and watch over them and bless their families for the sacrifices that they make in our behalf. We pray that Thou will guide and direct us and that we'll remember the importance of civility in what we do as we serve and as we communicate and talk as citizens and as members of this community and members of this state and country. And we pray that Thy guiding hand will protect and watch over each and every one of us every day and say the same name as Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, minutes from July 23rd, 2025, August 13th, 2025, and August 27th, 2025.
I've read the minutes and I don't see any changes unless Commissioner Perry need, would like to make a change. So I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from July 23rd, 2025, August 13th, 2025, and August 27th, 2025.
I second it.
It's been moved by Commissioner Vincent and second by Commissioner Perry to approve the minutes from July 23rd, August 13th, and August 27th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next item, administrative review reports, future agenda items. Commissioners?
I have none.
I do have some per next one, though.
Okay. All right. Item number four, former agenda items. County Attorney Steve Hadfield.
Got a couple there. We have an agreement for the lease at the fairgrounds with Tower. I can't remember the full name of the company. We had approved it before and then they redrafted it basically because they wanted to use their language, not our same language. We reviewed it. We're good with it. So we just need to approve that and authorize it today.
Okay.
And this is, this is the ones that use the east parking lot, correct?
Yes.
Oh, is it the east, is it the east parking lot or is it the, is it the cell tower?
It's the cell tower.
Oh, this is the cell tower, not, not the east parking lot, folks. Okay. So this is the cell tower issue we've already talked about. Yeah. So we, do we need another motion on that?
Probably because it's a different agreement.
Okay. So I'd, I'd make the motion, since we've already approved this once, but I'd make the motion to approve the agreement with the cell tower with the new language that's been presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve the cell tower agreement has been reviewed by the county attorney's office. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have one other issue. There's, there's one, there's two settlements with the opioid that need to be approved. One of them's on the agenda. The other one, we just got an email that it hadn't been approved yet. That's the Purdue settlement. It has to be approved by the, I think the 30th of September.
Yes.
So there's two things we could do. We could, they came to Lee in his email for, what do you call that? E-signature?
Yeah, it's for an e-signature. Because I was on the health department. I've been signing them up till now. And so they've come to me.
It should be signed by the chairman.
Yeah.
So we can do one of two things. The chairman can say it's okay for Lee to sign it and have him send it back. We could have them resend it to Boyd so he could.
That, Steve, was that not in our packet?
The one was, but the.
Because I did read the one agreement.
The Purdue one is not. The one that's in your packet has like seven other different companies.
Right. Yep.
The Purdue one, I'm not sure what's happened. I'm not sure we haven't approved that one yet, but it's due on the 30th. We could approve that as prior business.
Yep.
Or we could put it on the agenda for next week. It's still not too late next week.
So, I mean, you've got that on your?
I do.
And you've reviewed it and you're okay?
I have and it's fine, yes.
We've reviewed them as well and we're okay with them.
So why don't we just have Commissioner Perry authorized to sign it and send it back?
So what I need probably is a motion.
Motion.
To that extent.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement.
It's the Purdue one.
The Purdue agreement and allow Commissioner Perry that is reviewed and allow Boyd to, Commissioner Bingham to sign it.
No, I'll be signing it electronically.
So I would make a motion that we allow Commissioner Perry to sign that.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to authorize Commissioner Perry to sign the Purdue opioid, opioid agreement and get it returned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Purdue is P.
D U R D U E.
I don't know if I'm sure that is right. Let me look it up real quick because I'm thinking it might be P R. Let me just pull it up. It's, yeah, it is P U R D U E. Yep. I've got it. I'll send a copy to you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number five, emergency management issues. Kevin, do we have any emergency management issues? Kevin, the other Kevin, do we have any? Nope. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. I should say Fire Chief and Chief of Police. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. All right. Sherlene is not here today?
No. When we get to this part, actually, she's got somebody taking her place for that part.
Okay.
Marcie's going to help with that.
So as far as CARPA and LITCF, we usually don't have any issues. So if we do, we'll push them off to the next meeting. Okay, attorney's office, item number seven.
This is a resolution for a appeal that's been filed by Pacific Corp. with the State Tax Commission on the centrally assessed taxes that they were assessed. We have an attorney that represents us on those.
Is it Tim? Is it? Yeah.
It is Tom.
Tom. That's it. Yeah, Tom. Tom Peters.
Tom Peters. He needs an ordinance saying that he's authorized to represent us on that to file a cross appeal. The reason we do that is so that we can participate in the appeal. If we don't file that, it just happens without us. If we do file a cross appeal, we can be involved in it. So there is a resolution authorizing the county, authorizing him to represent the county on that.
I would make that motion that we approve, Resolution 2517, approving the filing of a cross appeal on behalf of Boxer County in the Pacific Corp. Incorporated centrally assessed appeal.
Second.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve Resolution 25-17, approving the filing of a cross appeal on behalf of Boxer County and the Pacific Corp. Incorporated centrally assessed appeal. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Just so you know, we're not lonely in that almost every county in the state is dealing with this.
We just heard about that discussion. Okay, auditor's office. Marcie's going to come and help us out.
This is Ryan Porter.
Hi, Ryan.
So he is putting.
You did pull the mic over by you, Marcie, and say your name.
I don't speak.
You gotta say your name.
You gotta be recorded. I'm sorry.
Okay. Marcie Powell with the auditor's office. This is Ryan Porter. He has put in for low income abatement and homeowner's tax credit. His income is above the level, but he has some medical issues that he would like to be approved to get the county's portion of the abatement. So I'll let him speak on it.
Okay.
Do I need to introduce myself?
Really close to you. Tell us who you are.
Ryan Porter. Just requesting the tax abatement. The reason for the, just being over on the limit is I withdrew my 401K to survive. So that's what kind of pushed me over. And then since the 15,000, like, March of '24, I haven't had any income. So I was just hoping that there was an exception, just because it was actually 401K income and not earned income.
So you haven't had income since March of 2024? You have health reasons or?
Yes. So I just have an immune deficiency. No immune system that I have. It's, I brought that paper today if you need a copy of it. And then.
I did read, I, we, I have read some of your doctor's notes and stuff like that.
Yep. So I just attached all the medical files on there just to give you a better of understanding because it is a lot. I don't want to take up too much of your time.
So how much are we talking, Marcie?
Nine hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-two cents.
That would be our portion that, that we would reduce it by?
Yes.
Okay.
So if the commission decided to do this, what about next year? What, what are we going to do next year?
So I have the attorney that's working on my disability currently. So I, I hope that my disability is approved. But she explained to me that the social security disability isn't considered income either. So I was just gonna wait and see. I mean, there won't be any returns to work. So it'll just be disability income. So.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners?
I would make a motion that we approve that property tax abatement parcel 03093-0068 as Marcie's explained it for Ryan Porter.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Vincent and seconded by Commissioner Perry to approve property tax abatement on parcel 03-093-0068. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, item nine A. Attorney Hadfield, you want to talk about this one?
Yes, we talked about this a little bit before. This is one that's on the agenda. It's another opioid settlement agreement for secondary manufacturers. I think there's seven of them involved. Once again, this was sent to Commissioner Perry. It's for e-signature. So we would need the same thing here. If you're good with him signing it, we need to have a motion made that authorizes him to sign on behalf of the chair. And then he can get that signed, taken care of. If you would rather not, we can contact them and have them email it to you. It's not due until October 8th. We do have a little bit of time.
I just assume get it done.
I'll make a motion that we approve the National Opioid Settlement Agreement Number 25-73 for secondary manufacturers presented by our attorney and allowing Commissioner Perry to sign that.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to approve the National Opioid Settlement Agreement 25-73 for secondary manufacturers with a stipulation that the chair allows Commissioner Perry to sign that document, get it completed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Request or proposal for the Curlew EMS to re-license ambulance with the state. Is that? I was going to say Kevin, but you don't look like Kevin.
This is David Smith from Snowville.
So I'm Dave Smith from Snowville. This is Dan Camp from the Utah Bureau of EMS. The ambulance service in Snowville is, it's time for it to, to relicense. And due to a new state law, it has to, the, the service area has to go out as a request for proposal. Likely the way that this is going to happen is no changes, but this is a process that we have to go through in order to get the approval from the state that we followed all the processes to have the Curlew EMS relicense. So what was sent to you guys is the request for proposal that is being put out. Ultimately, our town council in Snowville will vote to award the service to those who put in. I mean, I don't see anyone else putting in for it, honestly.
What?
Yeah, imagine.
We're just grateful there's people out in Snowville willing to do this, so.
Exactly.
You think it's because of this 50 miles away from everyone else? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah. Yeah, I can't imagine that it would be a high demand area. Ultimately, though, because the area that we cover is within Snowville Town Incorporated area, but also in the county.
Correct.
We will need at some point then a signed, what did you call it? A letter of approval? A letter of approval from the county to agree with the Snowville Town Council's way that they vote.
And when we, we've done that before with Park Valley and, yeah, so.
Don't see it being a problem.
Are there any questions that you have, you guys have for us?
This is a new world for us with that Senate Bill 215 that got passed. We understand that. But yeah, it's, it's what we're going to go through and we're going to figure it out. So I would make the motion that we approve this request for, for the proposal for the Curlew EMS to re-license, to send out this RFP and then eventually provide them the letter they need.
Yeah, that's what we would need ultimately to finish this is a letter signed with your approval.
Okay. Second.
So we've had a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve the request for proposal for the Curlew EMS to re-license ambulants with the state with a accompanying letter supporting the Curlew City Council, Snowville City Council.
Curlew, that's always, I was like, Curlew, not EMS, but it is same thing.
Yeah, years ago it got made. Does Curlew EMS, because we also go into Idaho. We cover into Stone and we cover up the freeway.
Right.
Just up there.
You've saved a lot of lives up there. So, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine C. Chrissy, you get to come and take your time at the microphone.
Am I going to burst into song? Because I'm going to.
We were hoping.
Get that microphone right next to your mic.
Christie Bennett, Commissioner's Office. I'm here with an indigent burial. Unfortunately, they say these things come in threes, so I'm hoping it doesn't. Here with another indigent burial for Ronald Bradford. He has no assets and the one child that he does have is incarcerated.
I read that.
So Myers-Marcher has asked that we would help with funds for the cremation.
So is that a set amount?
Yes, it's a flat 1,200 dollars.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve the indigent burial request for Ronald Bradford.
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent to approve the indigent burial request for Ronald Bradford. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chrissy.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Okay, this.
You're up, my brother.
Your turn.
Kevin Lloyd, Boxer County Fire Marshal. Sorry.
Wait a minute. Tell us some Kevin Lloyd.
Nope. So I'm asking for, to switch over from a company called Image Trend that I use for reporting, inventory, inspections, stuff like that. I want to switch from that over to a company called First Do that does the same thing. I currently with Image Trend, I'm paying about $2,300 a year for Image Trend and I have no access, no ability to change my inspection forms. So if I go do a large commercial structure with sprinkler systems, I have to use this form. If I go do a residential daycare, I have to use the exact same form. I, to get the ability with, through Image Trend to do that, the quote that they give me is $13,000 to do that. It'll come down $5,000 and be 7,600 a year after that. If I go to First Do, I, the first, first year is $6,800 and then it drops down, drops 1,800 to 4,900 a year after that. And that gives me the full ability to do everything with First Do that I would with the 13,000 with Image Trend.
So your cost's going to go up, but you're going to get better responses, is that what you're saying?
Well, it goes up initially. I mean, unless he, unless we get him to do that, unless we tell him that he needs to do all that other stuff. And then it costs us more to go to stay with Image Trend. So.
Or I just stay where I'm at and fight.
And then fight the problems.
Hassle trying to make sure you do a good inspection.
Image Trend, once you understand it, that you can navigate it pretty easy, which I can. But if you don't, you'll never understand a piece of it.
Okay.
We got locked out of it recently and Image Trend wanted us to, and I'm admin and Corey Oaks is also the other admin, and we both got locked out. They wanted us to send photo ID, a letter from the commissioners, everything to get unlocked. It was going to take about 60 days.
Wow.
We pitched enough fit that they unlocked it. So I've got the, we're back in.
So is this, I mean, are you planning on doing this right now? How long is your contract with Image Trend go?
I got one more year.
One more year. So are they going to penalize you for jumping now or?
No, we'll, we'll hang out for the, keep it for the year because it's paid. And that way I can pull all the data out of there while I've already paid for it before they lock it up.
So, so we'll pay them. We've already paid them and then we'll, we'll but pay First Do if we approve this, 6,800. And you'll be using kind of both systems to transfer data.
No, I'll take out of Image Trend and put it, start transferring it over to First Do.
Okay. And you have this in your budget?
Yeah. And then talking to Keith about it, the server is a 10-year-old server and with the past, what happened with us with the county, that needs to be replaced. It's a high risk right now. And I don't know how much that's going to be. But Brigham City's on, on it also. They're talking about going to First Do and Tremont's also on it. I don't think that Tremont will leave Image Trend, but.
This is special server that we have all this fire on?
Where this one with First Do is all web-based.
Oh, so First Do is all web-based, so we wouldn't have to worry about the server at that point.
And it'll talk to Spillman and do all that.
Oh, that's great.
All right. Well, that, I'll, I'd make the motion to approve this contract with First Do reporting software contract 2572.
Commissioners, before you vote on that, we have reviewed it. Looks good. The only question we had, and you may have just answered it. I know we talked about having all software approved by IT rather than having people just buy it and install it, like has been done in the past. I don't know if we were out in that process.
I've talked to Keith. He's, he's fully aware of it and okay with it.
So we should be okay.
So is he actually?
I'll go through him to get it all installed. I'm not going to.
So has he actually operated it or you just talked to him and explained it to him or what?
I, I, he, I sent him all the information. He looked it up.
Oh, okay.
And fully understands it. And he actually asked, can I get rid of the server out of there?
I know he likes to, he's going to want to go to this cloud base. So what I do is I'd make a motion, we approve the First Do reporting software contract 2517 for fire and EMS with, but we, I think we need to make sure that Keith signs it, signs off on it officially as well.
Okay.
So when you go to sign it, make sure you have Keith's signature on there as well so we know that he has agreed and is fully aware of what we're doing.
Okay, I can do it.
That would be my motion.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Perry and a second by Commissioner Vincent for the approval for First Do reporting software contract 25-72 for fire and EMS with condition that our IT Director Keith Keller sign off on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, we are now to our public comment time. Those wishing to make a public comment shall sign the comment roll and will be responsible for following the rules outlined in the county commission rules and procedures. Speakers will have one three-minute opportunity to speak regardless of the number of items they wish to address. Speakers shall address their comments to the county commission only. This is a time to be heard. There will not be back and forth dialogue with commissioners. Speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the county clerk. The county clerk will make the information available to the county commission. That in mind, we have one, Deanna Hardy.
Deanna Hardy, thank you very first for tweaking the flags. Look a lot better. It'd look even more better if the new one was gone. Okay, Deanna Hardy Brigham. September is Constitution Month. We are grateful for our founding fathers that were taught from the pulpits of thunder, as they were called. We are grateful for pastors and ministers who taught the people about standing for liberty. Great Britain attributes our success at winning our independence in 1776 because of the Black Robe Regiment, who were pastors and ministers. In Dr. Incovenance 101, 77, 79, 80, the Lord states, according to the laws and constitution of the people, which I have suffered to be established and should be maintained for the rights and protection of all flesh, according to just and holy principles. Therefore, it is not right that any man should be in bondage one to another. And for this purpose, have I established the constitution of this land by the hands of wise men whom I raised up into this very purpose and redeemed the land by the shedding of blood. The first battle of the Revolutionary War was at Lexington, Massachusetts, and the defenders of that area, along with the second battle at Concord, Massachusetts, were pastors and their congregations. The difference between the US Revolution and the French Revolution was the US depended upon God, while the French excluded God. There are many examples in scripture where the people stood against their wicked governments. The prophet Daniel was told by his wicked government not to pray. Daniel had to choose to obey God or man. He chose to obey God and continued to pray, even knowing that the consequence of his choice were his death by being fed to the lions. Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego were told by their wicked government to worship a golden idol. They chose to obey God and only worship Him and not a man's idol, even though the consequences of their disobedience was death by a fiery furnace. What are we willing to sacrifice to stand for our liberty in obeying God's law and the US and state constitutions? The Boxer Committee of Liberty encourages our representatives, as well as all citizens, to study and know the US and state constitutions so as to recognize when our government is ignoring and subverting our constitutions and denying the people their freedoms and liberties. The constitutions are to limit government and not the people. Final quote is by Isertaph Benson. He said, when a man stands for freedom, he stands with God. And as long as he stands for freedom, he stands with God. And were he to stand alone, he would still stand with God.
Three minutes are up.
Any man would be eternally vindicated and rewarded for his stand for freedom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Had to finish this quote.
Okay, warrant register. Any personnel actions, voluntary action forms, cell phone allowance? Coming through. Anybody know what the date is today?
It is the 10th because tomorrow is the 11th. It's Patriot's Day tomorrow.
Okay. It's ghost. I don't know. What's that? Oh, you don't need to sign that?
I need that one. This one.
Oh. Oh.
I'm gonna hand these back to her.
Yes, sir.
You know, once I sign those, because I'll do it tonight when I get home, they'll send us a copy back. They do, almost, almost, they almost always have.
Okay.
Two more. There was two more sheets in that cell tower lease.
That means, yeah, every time I've done it, like, I send it home, and you're sending a signed copy back with whoever else is, yeah.
You think it's because the Health Department, is that why they're sending those to everybody?
Yeah, well, I think that's what we did, is when we did this, yeah, it was, so I've never able to get hold of it. I got the condition, like, okay, that's why they started sending it to me directly, because I was the Health Department representative. It's weird because. Abuse authority. But it's. As long as we're, as long as I know we're doing the right thing, I look at it. They all be legitimate that way, so.
Yep.
I'm just shocked if someone's coming back, because it's funny, so, yeah.
Okay, we good, Martha? Okay, we, we do not need a closed session today. So I will accept one final motion.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
We had a motion by Commissioner Vincent and a second by Commissioner Perry to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.